Hey, we're ready. But you tell me when. Not yet. I don't think so. I just know Mr. Shemich wants to get out of here. And I appreciate that.
I want to see how the sausage is made.
Yes.
Right.
Are you just want to turn the blind eye?
I got it.
Think we're good?
Make sure.
Okay, we're good. You all ready? We will call this meeting to order. And please stand with me. We'll do the pledges.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. A pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
And we have Pastor Steve Sanders here with us tonight, and he is going to bless us with a beautiful prayer. Thank you for coming.
Your father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this privilege of serving the people of this town. Tonight, as we gather to work, please help us to remember that we serve all the people of Levelling. Please help us to remember that we serve those who struggle to put a roof over their children's heads, as well as those who live in comfort. That we serve those who believe differently than we do, as well as those who share with us a house of worship. That we serve those who love differently than us, as well as those who love like us. That we serve those who look different than we do, as well as those who share our skin color or background. And that though that we serve those who vote differently than us, as well as those who sort who share our political ideals. Please help us to remember and to act on these standards that we, all of us here, are instruments of all the people to ensure a happy, healthy, significant, productive people and help them to live those lives in this town. Please forgive us of all our sins. Christ stand me pray. Amen.
Thank you, Steve, so much. We appreciate your time. Good night. Yes.
What church do you represent?
St. Paul's.
Thank you, sir.
Good night.
You as well.
Thank you, Al.
Our first out of a business. Will there be physical year twenty-four, twenty-five budget workshop?
All right.
Andrea's presenting. Joe and I are leaving. Look.
Oh, no, it's good. I don't know where they think they're going. I just might cry.
If you will stroke out the other knob.
Too many documents over here.
Those tend to be like it's awful. They were huge. They're all huge. The ones that I saw from there, serving them up.
You're gonna get a crack?
A little bit. I'm still holding my cake. I had every meal with Councilman Stewart today. This is the third meal today.
People are gonna start talking.
I know.
Bless you.
Party's on. Jeff's got his caffeine.
You know, Kevin had the same same thought. They're kindred spirits. Aren't we all? No, no. Thought so.
Mayor and council, we could I, again, very informal. Apologize again for budget being late. And we know we're behind the curve. And we're trying our best to get caught up on a lot of different things. I laid a memo in front of you that you'll be looking at Monday night at the regular meeting. We're adding some budget dates just to give us a chance to get comfortable, work through it, but also instead of spending four and five hours in a night or something, spend a couple of hours and in hitting some critical areas and then go home. We're still waiting on our numbers from the county regarding the tax rate. But we're we're kind of operating right now on the assumption that the tax rate from last year is pretty much what we're going to be proposing. Maybe a little bit under that. We don't know that for sure, but with values going up, as y'all traditionally know, that then your tax rate goes down some. Next week, we have council meeting as I don't know if you've seen it, but it is a long agenda. So we may not get to anything on the budget. Requesting one on Thursday, and the Thursday council meeting is where we'll be asking y'all to establish the ceiling of the tax rate, which is a number that's basically saying we're not going to go above that number. It doesn't mean that is the number. It just means we're not going to go above it, probably come down below that, and we will move accordingly. Also, in front of you is a memo that kind of shows the capital request that various departments have asked for be funded at this time. Those are usually some of the last items that we work through to see how we afford them, see if we put them in internal financing or where exactly they end up. You will see that, you know, the total of this is about two point eight million dollars, but one point eight of that is the ladder truck that's still sitting out there. And that's an item that we've got time to discuss. The one we were going after got grabbed, which might not be a bad thing. Gives us more time to work through this and really figure out what is best course to move forward. So are there any initial questions, comments, concerns, or anything that y'all want to ask or want to make sure we cover before we get going too far?
Sure. And we'll go through this, right? Or now the time to ask on that?
If you've got any questions on that, we can ask on that and
The lightning detection, um outdoor activity lightning detection, that's not just for the oxy complex, right? Or is it just from there?
I believe it's just for oxy. It's something that we really like to be looking at.
I understand.
I will double check that, but to me, that's a, an item that LCD C should consider funding, but
You can look that up.
I just didn't remember if it just covered that area, like was installed there or if it's on someone's phone. I think it goes off automatically from remember.
It's installed at a certain site and it when it goes off, it lets everybody know lightning's been detected. You need to clear the fields or you need to clear the park. And then it'll give you an all safe time to come back as well.
And I like, if I remember right, I think that aspect was great because if employee A is on on leave or vacation, they're not responsible. It's automated weather driven system.
Well, and in sports, it takes the pressure off an umpire. Then people go, I grew up here. I know West Texas thunderstorms. We got another 20 minutes. Uh, we may not have another 20 minutes. So this will be something that's just the way that it is.
Office chairs for the PD. How many is that for five grand?
It's almost all of them. Most of their chairs have are old, mute. The hardest thing on police department chairs, most of them have the arm of the belt. And when their equipment
Oh, wow.
belts sit on them, rub up against them, it scratches them, tears them up.
I never thought of that.
So we may
All right, bro.
And you'll see dispatch. Dispatch chairs are very expensive, but they need to be, because they're in them a lot in
I've seen those chairs too. They're different.
They're different. Previous city where we, they wanted the stand up desk and they wanted a treadmill underneath it. That was kind of different. We worked with it until someone kind of tripped and wiped themselves out. And so we got rid of that idea.
Right. We don't need anyone going down.
So. Any other questions on this thing? If you'll see under especially police, you see we did approve five Tahoe's for this year. We may not need five next year. We may only need four, but I'd like to list a higher number. And then if we can work our way back, we do have three that were totaled with a storm. But we're gonna have to work through the app piece of what
The park master plan, is that something that the LEDs?
That's something that they will be presenting to them. And I think a lot of these items that they could probably fund. But we'll look at that. Body camera system that's on here. The system that we have now is out of date. Companies are longer around. As you'll see, it's seventy-two thousand five years. It's basically Motorola is just instead of the big three hundred thousand dollars, it's it's seventy-two for five. And probably five years, we're back in the cycle again, the way technology is changing. So
How many cameras is that?
Twenty-two.
Everybody on patrol. What about our ICOs?
They have, they just have the body. They don't have the in far one. But right now we're we went on the phone and so watch our own more than our tier one. We're not talking to you and now they're talking. They're ninety-three percent full through one and eighty-three percent on tier two, which is the same thing. This, well, I think this is going to allow us to go to cloud based.
This goes cloud based, so that'll take away.
We're starting to get the errors in the patrol units when we get the errors, when you start getting full.
Just like my phone.
We're probably we're in the ballpark that when it starts going down, it's we might be able to phase into this. It looks like it's thirty.
The quota is for twenty-two units. You will also see money in there for tasers. And this is basically making sure everyone has a taser. They're no longer going to be shared. It'll be tasers available for or every officer will have one.
Yes.
We getting one from the chief or is he or she their own?
Our department's ice machine maker, I guess, is a lot bigger than the one for the
Yeah, sure.
Or for the oxy.
That was something from the disaster event. We felt it needed a secondary one in there because the one that they had was just
kept running out.
kept running out. And and it, that seems to be the place that during summer, all departments go by and get ice and
True.
other people come by, other entities, so.
And that's a good thing. I mean, that you can think, well, they don't need to. We want them to come. We want that to be a friendly place.
Sure. And I understand. I mean, it's a hundred and three degrees out there. They needed some ice. I understand. And I will vouch for the ice machine at the oxy. Personal experience with that one. So about
Dustin said it's about thirty years old, so we may need to upgrade the size on it or something to make sure that it does what we we need it to do. And someone asked me what kind of ice it was gonna have. Is it, you know, this or that? That was
Get ice.
I was like, I don't know.
That you don't?
No.
Coolers, it needs to be the
And it's hard. Those those ice machines, you know, with it not being used at the oxy complex during the winter, I mean, those things want to run and want to be used and they wear out if they're not used.
Okay. Any other questions, thoughts, comments?
I have information on the lightning detection.
Yes, ma'am.
One, it's twenty-six thousand dollars for two units. One was at City Park and one was at the Oxy.
Okay. Thank you, Andrea. In the panic button alarm system. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Paul's been working on that and we were working with all the entities. So that number may change. We understand the
The one with the, I was making sure it was that.
The school did some things different, but we're trying to see how we could work with with all of that. The school had to begin a system that's in all the classrooms in various things like that. So
That's a legislature mandated thing.
I'm sure we're gonna have a lot of false calls initially. Especially in classrooms where boys are at and boys are real good when mom teacher says, don't push that button. That was first thing that they go do is push that button. And grain did us. I don't know why, but it's just what we do.
Okay. So they're gonna have so much fun with that. I love it. Thank you, legislature. Right. I say that. I don't know if it saves somebody. It's worth it. Absolutely. Absolutely. It's worth it. But it just is going to make me
Well, and I hope everybody understands, we know that we're gonna have to extend grace initially because there's going to be a lot of false calls. I've already had somebody that had a baby. So y'all are gonna come down on them and take them. Now, we're gonna bring people in because it's gonna be new and it's we've got to work for it. Don't try to hopefully make sure that it's not crazy. So we'll work through that. Okay, we have revenue, sir. Yes. General fund revenues. You can see in the twenty-four, twenty-five those budgets, about three point five million dollars coming in, tax collection. And we're still finalizing this year. We're still need to get the audit done this year. I don't think any of us are comfortable that we're where we're at, but Cynthia's been working extremely hard. Joe has worked incredibly hard to get the information that we have. So I want to make sure that they get the proper accolades for everything they've been doing to these numbers together. Cynthia is still learning different accounts. So sometimes things get in an area where they're not supposed to be, but you know, we all have been there where we're learning a new system, something new, and she's making great, great progress. Another thirty years from here, when she retires, she will have this down like clockwork.
Do you want to remind council, if I may, James?
Yeah, you jump in whenever you want.
My council, that that three point four eight five five six five, that's at ninety-six percent is that's what we structure our property taxes. So right now we're looking from the previous tax structure. We're in between the ninety-six and the hundred percent. So if you look here, you got three point five, three point four eight five, and then we got three point six at a hundred percent. So we're sitting in between in the middle. So doing a little bit better than ninety-six, but not as Do we have that? She did not have this yet because we still have to calculate taxes. That's the way on that information from the tax office.
You will have that sheet eventually.
You still looking at?
No, you're good.
Go look.
Our franchise, you'll see underneath that pretty much in line with years past. We will, XL will be coming in with some stuff regarding potential rate increases. Atmos will be coming forward with some potential rate increases. In both of the committees that we're members of that review all of that will be sending us information that makes sense. We, with a whole host of other cities, are members of committees that are experts in reviewing electric rates or electrical analysis and all of that. If we pay a fee, but it actually saves us a lot because try to understand utility rates, natural gas rates, and all that is very, very complicated process. So we, we rely on them to help us navigate through. We still have a dinosaur on here regarding cable TV, which is zero. Above that is franchise for telephone. I don't know how much longer there'll be a franchise for telephone, but it's
That is for cell phone too, doesn't it? Or is it just, is that just landline?
It's landlines.
Utilizing our right of ways.
The wireless people are doing their best every session to work through that they don't have to pay any franchise fee because they're technically not using public right of way for anything.
Clever.
They're quite creative. Sales tax, we're projecting about two point four million dollars. We're anticipating guessing in a three percent increase. We're hoping is higher. I would much rather be conservative in this. We do have a couple of new businesses that'll be coming in. But they're not a type that's brand new here. They'll just be kind of trading off from other places where where they won't be. That's an area of economic development that we need to be working on. We did find out from the company that's going to be in the rail part, Science Co. That some of the product that they sell will be subject to sales tax. So we really won't know how that will work out for at least a year, maybe a year and a half to really see the impact of that one. But that's a good thing that is adding to our tax base because our sales tax not only provides general fund, but economic development, LCD C, which is our parks, buys property tax relief. So, you know, when people ask, why should I buy at home? These are reasons because those sales tax dollars get used multiple places throughout the city.
Street maintenance tax.
And street maintenance. Sorry, I forgot about your, your team.
Eighteenth.
A Mo is
Eighteen.
A forgettable person.
No, you're not. You sound like the city secretary now. Oh, gosh. Building permits, we kept pretty, well, we raised it up. Part of it is we, we're still seeing an uptake just from things happening from the farm. We don't have an account, Penny Newman, because they're going to be rebuilding them. So that will be a bump. And we're hoping that the good news keeps coming, that
Very much so.
people will be looking here. You know, it starts with us. If we've got to be positive, and that's when Joe and I were looking at this, you know, you kind of wrestle. Do you put sales tax flat? Because that's kind of where this year's coming in. And I've always been at school, if we don't believe in ourselves and believe we're going to grow, then why should we ask anybody else? So, you know, three percent? We're still believing. We're still growing. We're hoping it's going to be more. So we'll keep
I'm hopeful. I really will forever believe that I think Starbucks kind of broke the glass ceiling for us. And that's when things really kind of started happening. You know, and there's, there's other growth happening and announced things and hopefully things that will be trickling in and be announcable soon. So very exciting.
You see the approximately two hundred and ninety-five thousand for sales tax to reduce ad valorem. If you remember, and Jamie, this new view, about one penny of our property tax is about sixty-three thousand dollars. It may adjust a little this year once we see what the numbers are. So when you look at this, you've, you've got a good five, six cents in there of, of property taxes that our sales tax are helping us pull off the overall property tax rate. Street maintenance. This is where we utilize dollars in here for seal coat. What else do we?
Any type of maintenance on the street, street sweeping, doing
Buttholes.
Buttholes, weeds, curbs, butter, stuff like that. We have to dig through for a a main or something we're working on. Does that repair of the street come from here? Does it come from the water department's budget? It comes from the street department's budget. There are other structures.
And then the rest of the items, RV park permits, police security, mixed beverage, sales tax, court fines. Everything else is kind of flat or the same through the rest of the
Thankful. There's nothing budgeted for game room permits.
Any questions on page one of the general fund revenue? If you don't have any, and something comes up, shoot me an email, shoot Joe an email. Page two. Rents. I know we're higher than here. What did we, you, we determine what was in that rent?
General funds rents, that's going to be your No, this is your parks or oxy sports complex.
Yes.
So all the rents coming in there. Also, your leases, when it comes to the oxy farm lease that we have in front, right there off of Avenue H.
And our tower lease.
And then our tower leases come through there too. That doesn't cover the lease out at the sewer plant. No, that's under enterprise. So we'll see that on there.
We kept our royalties pretty much. Even from what previous years, interest earned is an area we know we've got to continue to manage better and try to find how we can get more dollars. You know, one of the challenges of that is, and we're looking at this when, when council authorized to pull the three hundred for the five hundred thousand out of our pro, put it into CD or something. When you're, when we're evaluating that is, how much do we lose from that pool when we pull that out? Versus how much do we really gain by moving into something separate? So we're, we're trying to do a better job of evaluating that and making public dollars and trying to get the best interest that we can. Because those interests allow us to take care of projects that sometimes we just don't have the funds to do. We got to be mindful too, that interest rates won't always be that strong. And so again, and we have to follow all of the standards laid out in the Public Funds Investment Act. Local contribution, and Joe spent a long time on this, making sure that all of this, this is where our SRO LISD reimbursements come in. It's also where EDC, they pay us back for, for things that are personnel services. So that's, that's what you see in local contributions.
Those are the five SRO officers. Usually it comes out to about eighty percent. So it's, it's looking correct. It's about a hundred thousand dollars or so that LISD is paying, paying for.
Thirty-four oh five, Hockley County Emergency Management. They, county traditionally pays up to fifty percent of the expenses incurred. They don't, I wouldn't say it's a always fifty percent. There's some things that they may look at and say, that's just a city item and don't really feel. So but it's still a good partnership and they help us and we help them. So it works out well that way. Fire services to the county. Again, we, we have a district that we're primarily responsible for is pretty much the northwest side of Hockley County. But we're always available to, to help the other areas as well. So
It was actual this year's last twenty-two, twenty-three, near mine. And that one right there is missing a payment from twenty-two, twenty-three. Just needs to get allocated. They pay every six months or semi annually.
Enter fund transfers is what comes in from our enterprise fund to, to pay general fund for work that is done within the enterprise fund by general fund employees. Also, it's, there's some in there to help keep tax rate low as well.
That's a
Metairie's in there.
Cemetery Fund has finance director and then Dustin, and sees over parks and cemetery, some of that salary from the cemetery goes into the general for the parks. Because it's all coming out of that one salary in the parks. And Cynthia works on cemetery deeds. So that's what some of that salary comes in to offset on the general fund.
Questions on projected revenues? Do know these numbers will change.
I want to point out. The projected revenue of miscellaneous, oh, one thirty-five, ten. You see that we budgeted forty thousand, but we see about two hundred fifty-seven thousand, six hundred fifty-eight coming in. That is because we have recently received our T M L check for the damaged vehicles, L damage. That was around one hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. So that's why you see that miscellaneous ever jump up. So.
So it won't always jump up that much.
No.
Well, we're going to have to buy cars.
Right.
And then you have to pay, we have to have to pay the deductible too.
A very high interest earning, quick turnaround CD.
And we're trying to figure out how we've got to repair all of these forty some odd vehicles that are out there.
Forty-two. And maybe forty-three.
We need a, we need a bulk discount. Yeah, maybe we hire our own guy. Maybe that's where we are.
Derek is awesome at the shop.
Yes. But he can't do that work, right? Derek at the shop can't take. Maybe there's a chance.
He does a lot of work, his work to grow.
But he'll be, yeah. YouTube.
He covers up for you all a lot. Is that what you?
Just want to point out too, that your revenues from what was budgeted this year at nine, five, one, seven. It's pretty much nine, five, four, five. So it's going to be about the same amount of revenue.
Questions revenue? It's the only chance you get to ask a question, Mayor Porton.
I'll come back, I promise you.
Expenditures in the general fund. The very first part is legislative, which council. It's not reflected in here. We haven't had discussion council Monday night is treat November. Moving forward with that, if it does, we'll adjust us accordingly. Open there. This, again, council expenses or various things come out of here. Any question in there? Mayor Porton, do we need to increase travel for your international junkets to?
We've got to go look at these projects.
They need security.
Captain Lopez is available, so.
Mr. Fisher, I will say that in the city council budget, that's where we pay our elections expenses. And if we end up having a charter election or something like that, that could, that could be a significant expense.
Our city attorney, when I asked him, and that's different department down there, but he. Suggested that we add about twenty-three thousand to the attorney, because if we do the charter election. Just their time involved is very extensive. And I will tell you, we do need to redo the charter. Forget what we were looking at the other day that was in the charter. And I think it's on the last time it was reviewed, nineteen seventy-three. I know some of y'all were not.
That's when we were looking to see when our stated meetings were.
Yes. So we need to get our lease into this century.
Oh, that's crazy.
I know some of y'all weren't even born then, but that's okay.
I wasn't either.
Okay, fine. That makes me feel better.
Okay, nobody in this room but me and James and Michael were born then.
No, I wasn't born then.
The next item after council is city secretary.
Explain?
Explain. So you will see in twenty, this year's budget, there was about twenty-three, five in advertising. It's down to ten. And the reason that is, is that we moved thirteen of that to human resources because of the advertisement for positions in the city.
Because that's where it should have been.
Where it's.
Well, it hadn't been too long since we split those two positions apart. It just never made the.
Okay. That makes sense.
You want me to go back, sir?
Oh, you skipped city management.
I was just trying to find where we were because.
On page five.
Yep, I found it. Thank you.
You're not important.
We're not, we're not, you know, we're not important.
That's why I was still stuck on council over here because.
Sorry.
I was trying to see where she was and, okay, I'm good.
Mayor Porton supposed to guide the new council member through the fort.
Something else that might be interesting, especially for our newer council member. But when we have things like our volunteer appreciation and our employee appreciation, that comes out of the city council budget. And typically out of all other, isn't that right, Joe?
It is all other, yes, ma'am.
And so when you look at that all other line item, which is forty-four eighty-one, it's a ninety-five thousand dollar line item.
It's also.
Where you, that's where you guys recognized our employees and our volunteers.
And remember, fifty, fifty thousand of that is for keep level. When out of the city council budget.
Out of that ninety-five?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions regarding city secretary? Finance? You see where professional services are high this year, part of it was having a local CFO and then. T M L finance team coming in. Fix some things that local CFO. Didn't do or wasn't quite right. Hang on there, you may have questions with.
The twenty-five hundred for training, will that be enough? Because I know she's trying to get up to speed on. Stuff. And it very well may be. I know it's a thousand dollars more than we've had, but.
You've got three thousand in travel and training, you've got twenty-five hundred.
So I know that she's trying, she wants to get caught up and be ahead. I just wanted to make sure. Not that we want to spend extra dollars, but.
A lot of, of the trainings that I've found are virtual. So. There wasn't a request for increase there, but just in the training line item, not necessarily the travel, but a lot of them are virtual.
Okay.
Goodness.
Thanks for finding those virtual ones.
He's part of the generation that enjoys virtual and online.
Yeah.
Now, because when you talk about virtual, I don't need virtual too well.
Municipal Court. Remember where.
Professional services.
I was. Remember why that jumped?
Yes, that's the credit card fees.
Did we pass that on?
Yes, it, for some reason, this year, we had a lot of credit card fees written, professional service in municipal court. I know Sean came and talked to you about it. Is that?
Wonder if that's from a new judge and taking care of all things for some.
So just the way that Sarah allocated the fees versus how I'm allocating them. And granted, throughout the process. Finding documents and stuff, I eventually found the spreadsheet that she used to allocate the fees. So. I mean, I, I think. Either, I, I need to look at it more. It's just the way that I distributed the credit card fees.
Okay. But we are passing, it's, it's the same system that we use if I'm paying my water bill. Okay. So we are getting that back.
Like you said, it's a pass through and we have that two point seven five.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Don't you write a check?
I do.
Okay.
You know, I'm cheap.
I write a check if I remember, but on the night it's due, if I'm laying in bed, I'm going to pay that fee.
Convenience.
Although I'm probably not going to, if I would get out of bed and come put it in the Dropbox, I'd be, whatever. It's worth the two dollars. I don't know what the late fee is. Probably cheaper, this is probably cheaper than late fee.
It is cheaper than late.
Dollar late fee. Only ever had a late fee once.
There's a place four, four doors down that's closer than the Dropbox, ma'am.
I'm going to come put it in your mailbox. To do this, James.
Will be the first time I haven't had something end up in there and run, okay. Fire Department, page eight.
These numbers come in handy.
They do.
They do.
Thanks, Joe.
They what?
Page numbers come in handy.
Oh, they do.
Bottom center, getting the.
Found it.
I even put the date on the right hand side too.
That was so amazing.
He was fully caffeinated when he did that. Feeling good.
The increases that you see in here under laundering, cleaning, it's just trying to. Their change in the detergent that they use to clean their bunker gear and stuff, so it's gone up a little. They are also down under repairs and maintenance. There. A lot of those fees are just taking care of the bunker gear and the SCBA's and various things like that.
If we find a spot to kind of do some community outreach, if we increase something in the budget for that kind of stuff for them.
Yes, sir.
Tiny.
They are. This year, two of the big projects, one is going to be coming up very shortly. We're still piecing it together, but we're hoping to have the fire trucks at. On the schools, opening week of school, that'll have a big banner on back says, welcome Lobos.
It's going to be awesome. She told me this was in the works. As a mom of little kids, they are going to die. The best way. They're going to freaking love this.
Well, we.
Yes.
Got to make sure we communicate so people don't panic that they see fire trucks there with lights on. So.
Placement. Oh, yeah, we'll get it. Placement and banners and.
I'd much rather see firefighters than police officers. So.
Oh, darts are thrown. Yeah. Oh, there she went. We're already there. Right. They know us.
They still wear blue because they, not sure which ones. And then October is National Fire Prevention Month, until we've put money in there for them to do some things to. Promote kids coming to the fire station or just do some fun stuff. It's also brush cancer awareness month. So they're looking at ideals for that as well.
Laughing.
So.
Yeah.
We're trying to find some things to. Get them more out in the community and recognize what they're doing. Our PD does a good job of that.
They always make Halloween really fun too. You can go up there on Halloween and trick or treat. Since they can't go to trunk or treat. They always do a really good job.
I agree. Now, we were, we're laughing, but no darts really being thrown because we're just trying to increase their presence and I'll do a great job of that already. So.
And James was on.
Today?
This week.
Every day.
Every day.
More than, more than usual.
Next, we have the amazing Level N Police Department.
Which one?
Amazing. Yeah.
We'd love to invite everybody out to the Blue and New Red Walter.
There you go.
Concession stand made me tired.
I was looking at it the whole time. That's a twelve hour shift all night long? And you're going to work all day on Friday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll give Andrea a round of.
I mean, I might be asleep at the concession stand. I figure we'll be done by two or three. Yeah. Or me.
Captain Lopez, were you going to ask mayor about being the designated runner? Hell's team, so y'all don't get.
You heard how fast that was?
I need a Duncan booth out there and put her in it.
Yeah, something like that would be a lot more profitable for me.
You're used to people. Fire Department had one, one time.
PD budget is pretty close. We're still going through it until pulling out. Dollars in there that if we're in there for animal shelter, because we are creating a separate budget. It's just taking a little bit more work to do that, but we hope to have that accomplished in the next couple of weeks. To make sure we got everything where it's supposed to be. Captain McDonald has given a couple of good draft animal shelter budgets. We just need to keep working through those.
And the police overtime line, Adam?
That was budgeted at seventy-five and sitting at one seventy-eight. I think we're scrutinizing that one to see.
Okay.
If we've got everything.
It's the lack of dispatchers that we've, we've had, dispatchers having to do a lot of overtime. So that's, that's where the bulk of it is rather.
That's what we're double checking about the app. We believe that's where the big piece is.
It is.
They're factured. Lots of hope there in the next year that we can add to those positions with that overload.
We're getting them nice chairs.
In the revenue, do we show, and I didn't spot it, but like, there's a lot of officers that work overtime. Does that pass through our budget? Like they work at it, the mallet or work at those things?
Police security, yes, sir.
Yes.
So it comes in, it shows in in revenue and then back out. I just, I, like I said, I didn't spot it in there. So it made me think.
I saw some of it.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
That's also for the events.
Yes.
Yes.
I think you guys have a lot of opportunity and the guys need that. I mean, it's, it's good for them.
Yeah, opportunity.
There it is, I'm sorry.
It was in there somewhere.
Thirty-one, twenty-three.
Twenty-five, three.
We were under on fuel. That's. Something.
Yeah, we've been under on fuel in almost all.
Yeah, that's.
They didn't go up quite as bad as we thought.
Right, that was.
Kind of budgeting for that.
We'll take it, right?
Yes. Wasn't bad enough, but.
We're under on a few things. Actually, several things. The building was up, was. What was that? Forty through twenty-one?
It was the air conditioner. That had to be replaced at the animal shelter. All worked on.
There you go.
The replace, it was replaced, yeah.
That looks like replacement cars.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then motor vehicles, we were up.
Is that?
That's just maintenance.
The repairs come out of that motor vehicle? I feel like we had a dinged up car every, every week.
Well, we did buy vehicles last, last year, so there's a lot more maintenance on them this year too.
Fair.
That's two years.
And you got a lot more maintenance.
Put them all on stick horses if they banged up another vehicle.
Kind of hard on them.
Have a bike.
Does have a bicycle, I think.
I'm wearing computer maintenance, that was way up.
Right.
I think we just doubled up on that.
Okay, so we're going to check that one.
Yes, I'll have to go in there in year end and just take off that because that's. So you know, no matter how many times I look at it, something always pops up.
It always happens.
Fair, Joe. There's a lot of lines.
Maybe we move budget under Andrea.
Please. Please.
Move budget under city secretary.
Oh, right here. He's just trying to torment me.
He's just tormenting.
At least don't math.
Look at that, I put everything together just for the, for the budget. We're separating everything back out. Still working on.
That's right.
But they do, they say most of the time I can say.
I think we're fine as long as we stay within.
I can't ask.
Please.
Any questions on this one before we move to?
And I'm actually. Hearing and equipment on police, the two hundred and forty-one thousand.
Good question. Forty-five, forty-one. Yes.
You know what? That, that was the communication. The communication equipment that we're replacing dispatch. From last year. That's no longer gonna be there.
Did we get a, did we get a grant or something?
I think we used ARPA, ARPA funds to. So that's one thing, too. Now that we mentioned that, ARPA funds have not been uh injected into, into the.
Right.
Actual budget, uh neither has a, I guess you would say the fund to fund transfers because uh. The L C, LCDC also had some project that they did that we need to inject that into the parks, too, but it offsets. It's about a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars that we need to actually add to, to the revenue on that part. Offset some of that, so.
To know dispatch equipment.
Forgot that those consoles were in it.
Yes, that's what I was, thank you. The dispatch equipment.
And new radios.
Radios.
Are we good there, Captain? I mean, now on, I mean, are we good with radios now? Like, that's. Yeah.
Got a whole radio system out, didn't it?
Yeah, changed every system we had in the four console, well.
They do the handhelds, too, for y'all? Was that in that?
And those are working well?
In a couple of years, we'll probably have something that are.
Yeah, like when you're in Oakland, can you, you having issues?
Right, y'all have issues that far out. Right.
Mentioned. The other one, the forty-five fifty-one, motor vehicles, forty-eight, two ninety-four, that was. Purchase of the animal control truck.
Oh, sure.
Again, that was ARPA.
And the box.
Queens, what's the status on that box? I don't know.
It'd be eleven. And counting.
So crazy. Sleep time on getting things is still not leveled out and sanding.
Speaking of the truck, the truck, we've gotten the truck and we've gotten it, uh, the lights mounted, mounted on it, so. So we're just waiting on the box and then mounting the lights on the box and then putting it together.
And we're using it as is right now and doing our best, yes, with it.
Questions? Tom, you have any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you for asking.
Yes, sir.
Also, forty-five, twenty-one, uh, the thirty thousand that's listed for this next year, that's potentially for the animal shelter to keep on uh. Improving the animal.
On which hotline, Adam?
Forty-five, twenty-one.
Four oh seven, forty-five, twenty-one buildings.
So that'll probably come out and move to the animal service budget. Anything else from PD? Inspections. He would jump out in this.
Yeah, they were looking for another fee from that department. How many was that on that pickup?
Joe's pickup is a twenty-twelve. It's.
It's pretty low mileage, though, wasn't it?
It, it's low mileage, but it's pretty hard, low mileage. It's, it needs to be replaced.
That was the rest in hell last year. The low mileage.
And just a note of interest, one of their vehicles. The Impala that Dina often drops around.
If we're, if we're replacing that vehicle, then in, in forty-three fifty-one, we're increasing that budget there. We've got a new vehicle versus an older vehicle, would that? It'd be the same or go down, or? What's the reasoning for that to go up?
I think they've gotten more tires. And it wasn't budgeted correctly, so we have.
Looking for, we should in next year's budget.
Yes. Because they're.
I know they're projecting it at fourteen, are they gonna get more tires next year? I mean, because they pushed that to fifteen hundred and we're.
Yeah, because we have the code enforcement truck and we have the, the code or the building inspector's truck and then we had the Impala that.
Right, but the building inspector's truck's the one we're looking to replace.
Eli got new tires on his. And I think Joe may have gotten them new on, because his, you could see.
Sure.
Through the tires and I said, we'll take off the new ones whenever we rotate it out, but I said, don't drive on.
He was trying to wait, but. There's a need for tires.
Will that vehicle be able to use somewhere else in the, in the departments? And parks and like this, since it does have low mileage, I know it's beat up, but. Are we just gonna put it in the sales, sell bin? Ma'am?
If we keep it, we'll have to replace um the seat and the interior, which is in a manual.
Cover for, yeah.
No, it, no, the whole seat, there's cushion, home, everything gone, so. Those are things we can look at and see if we can.
Question, no, like, yeah, maybe a backup.
Being that low of mileage.
Um, I don't know, I don't have the use for it, you know, but so am I.
I don't know how low it is, I need to check on mileage and see, bring that back to you.
Incredibly low last year, can sit terrible to the year. So, what?
Also, uh, we utilize trade-in value and when we bought purchasing.
A new one.
It offsets a little bit of.
Just wonder if they won't give us anything since it's so old, if it might be worth. Keeping, like you're saying, for something. I mean, it's, if it's not, if it's not in that great a shape, like you're saying, it's probably not a good airport. You know, courtesy car or something, but. Maybe we can find a place for it, or maybe it's not a good idea. It might be worth looking at.
The professional service line item going up ten thousand, that's because of the. The health.
I've texted Joe Shad just in the event we can get the mileage.
Another big one is forty-four eighty-one. Um, that's because so many of the uh substandard structures have been. Uh, committed by council to go ahead and get demolished.
We have to commit to that. We have to commit because we've got to do something about it.
There's so many in the rear already that we haven't got done, and now we're getting more coming in, too, so.
But, I mean, you're looking at pushing that up fifty grand.
Yes.
More than fifty. Joe and Elias has a cost. Eight, nine thousand dollars. On average, sort of ride any house all the way through that process and demo and all of that.
And I know we've had some that cost a lot more than that, that were just giant and full of stuff.
If we're, if we're gonna commit to trying to clean it up, we're gonna have to add the dollars there.
And we've got, probably because we got eleven meeting right now.
And nine more coming.
And nine more coming.
Need to go.
If they're ten grand apiece, I mean, there you go. It's not even enough right there.
We, we've got to see if we can find some kind of grant program or something to help us because. This storm's gonna add even more to it and.
And if we could find it, if we could find a program to catch them before they get into this shade, to help homeowners to. Rehab, to keep them from ever getting to this point.
Well, most of us, the homeowners don't communicate. Y'all recently just kind of, not kind of, you recently said, okay, tear one down. It was like a day after you did that, the homeowners, oh, I haven't been able to get in touch with y'all. We really want another chance to do all of this, and it's like. This has been a six-month process. I don't know where you've been. And really, your only choice now is to go to district court to do this. That's the frustrating thing. I know our guys really go out of their way to communicate, to get a notice out, to do everything we.
Sit on the home.
And we don't hear anything until it gets before council, and then it's like, give us more time.
But those neighbors are living by it every day. That's what it's mean. And y'all are going there because it's bad people are in it.
People, it's abandoned structure and they're gonna go there to get out of the elements or do bad things, so.
At some point, we're gonna have to weigh our options, though, because we are tearing these down and leaving open lots, which in open lots causes weed problems and then things like that, so. As, as you can tell, that's what, uh, that's why you're a hire of equipment, that's where all your mowing comes out of.
Very imperfect process, you're right.
We've got to readdress this because it is. It's gonna bankrupt the city. I mean, if we keep doing this, because we're gonna be spending two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars and. And then all we're gonna have is empty lots that aren't on the tax roll.
But we're having to.
And we're having to mow and. It turns into blight and people are like, I don't want to build here, I don't want to live here, because look at this, it's how. I think this year, we've really got to come up with a better plan, idea. And part of that, too, I know we've talked about it, is, you know, find some partners, do some infill building and.
We're gonna have to get creative and think.
Perfect homes, you know.
And two, when the partner that we have has someone that wants to buy it, it needs to move through the process, not. Oh, well, we think we can get more. Maybe you can, maybe you can't. That's just like selling your house, you know, you kind of set a number and if we get it, great, we don't do this, but. I think we've seen over the last year, we agreed to do something and then when it went through the process, we lost more than half of it. And that's frustrating.
Right, twice. Um, Joe Shad's truck is a twenty-twelve and has sixty-eight thousand miles.
Oh, yeah, that's what kills me. But why is it sticking, with just sixty-eight thousand miles and why is the seat going out of it?
We drive it back.
Well, yeah.
To roll back the numbers.
Yeah, well, just a thousand miles and the seats in that kind of shade, it's like. Buy a new pickup, is it gonna be the same shape?
Any other questions on this one before we move page fourteen, emergency and health services?
Mrs. Cole, right?
Yes, ma'am. And again, the county uh covers approximately up to fifty percent of the expenses within uh budget. It's pretty close uh to previous years. The only, you know, the challenge that we're still working through. Captain McDonald kind of alluded, we've got to figure out what to do with the tower. Uh, they got damaged uh through the storm, you know. We've got to look, see if we need to be building a new one. Um, can we lease one? We're looking into that option. And if we've got to build one, it's, I think we saw a couple of hundred. Couple of hundred if we have to do that. In excess of, so.
Can we claim any of that on FEMA?
We will.
Or damage?
We will try. We're gonna try to file everything we can and see where the, the chips fall.
Just want to remind council, too, that oh one, four oh nine, forty-four thirty-one, professional services, you have about a hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine thirty-one coming out of it. That's also, that's your senior citizens and that's also your ambulance services contract that comes out of the emergency.
Yes, almost sounds sick.
Watch in your mouth. And ambulance what?
Yes, ambulance service.
Ambulance services contract.
And Joe, the senior citizens did not request an increase, is that correct?
I haven't.
I'm only saying that because I had heard that there was a struggle financially there, so. I'm going, would have expected it, right?
We did just receive a thank you from them, but every time we pay them. Quarterly money, they send us a nice thank you handwritten.
It's nice.
Nothing has come across for any increase.
Does that, this supervision, that reflect a? I mean, that, that's reflecting the three percent that we were talking about, or?
Right, it's in.
You didn't put the three percent?
Three percent plus.
But that, but that, that's.
It's in.
But the three percent is.
Three percent is in there.
In there, budget-wise.
Yes.
I didn't, I saw that and I didn't know if we were gonna hit a three percent on top of that or not.
Well, let's go back to the city secretary, I didn't see that.
All the personnel services, it has a three percent colon. Proposed, yes.
Anyway, I had my phone's there, I was like, I was.
West side.
Okay.
Nobody misses me, so I'm okay.
You don't know? What is the forty-five, forty-one machinery and equipment? That was in the, in the.
That was trying to.
Sixty-five. Yes, Tom, plenty of food there. What, are y'all gonna eat? That food's just sitting there, please eat. You're eating?
Chicken trip side is written at the bottom corner.
Minutes ago.
Read, read the bottom corner.
Yeah.
You too, Cynthia.
I just came in. But there's, there's food there, please eat. Tom, you don't want to eat? Okay, great deal.
What is he doing?
You know, uh, there to that sixty-five. Forty-six of it is, is a panic alarm system at twenty. And the outdoor activity lighting detection.
Oh, it's the, it's the cabinet from the.
Southern capital.
It's the lighting and the panic button.
I know you're back on that first sheet, or that.
Yes, that's where those are in the budget.
Some of those capital items that are on that sheet aren't reflective on the entire budget, in, in the entire budget.
But that one is.
Some of it is, yes.
That vehicle insurance, that covers the MOB and, and his pickup.
You had, sir, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and, and the way that's allotted, it's kind of crazy when it comes in from TML risk pool, we, we get one lump. And then we have to divide it. That's what some of the, some of them are gonna look, some of our uh departments on insurance. And workers' compensation and things like that, they're, they're not, they're gonna look kind of weird. Uh, we'll just have to go in there and, and do some adjustments.
You just have to divide it across the, all the departments.
Sadly, um, I allocated that right before Cynthia got here, and I think I created departments that we didn't have. So she will have journal entry after journaling.
Journal entry.
Because I was just trying to get it paid.
Hey, yeah, vehicle insurance and building services.
The other part of that sixty-five, there's about seven thousand dollars. Uh, he's requesting for uh D H F in-car repeaters. What basically allows for a mobile repeater, so when he's out certain place in the county that he can communicate. And then um he's looking at Starlink satellite to allow him to utilize that.
Yeah.
My dad knows that.
Yeah, here it works great.
I think the vendor he was talking to told him to, they told him to hold up and. I think they're trying to do something different and do a line item for actually government pricing.
Gonna say Starlink, it'd be a great donation PR thing if they gave that to, you know, first responders. Yeah, I'm feeling like, come on now.
Hey, he's struggling.
Yes, you're right, I forgot.
I don't know, he's been fighting off a lot here, like.
Who is it?
Elon Musk.
I don't keep up with them.
Yeah, he can afford it, feel okay with it. Wish I had his number.
Oh, here, let me text him. The fake Elon Musk, there's like twenty-seven on TikTok and they all keep trying to follow me, but they don't have the check, so he ain't real.
They're not verified.
Not verified.
Street Department, page sixteen.
Other camera. And his salary is zero.
I love him more.
You remembered, but. For that, that we had to allocate, uh, all the department heads into one department. So we chose him to allocate sanitation. So when sanitation comes up in enterprise fund, that's where his salary is at.
Better to be in there than general.
And we'll probably have something that'll be significant here with that building at some point in time, whenever it's all made here.
And he spends most of his time there, probably in the water, wastewater and sanitation part of the street. So that, it was a good call to, to take it out of sanitation, out of the enterprise fund. Which, and, and I don't know if you explained, like the business like function of, of a city, how enterprises.
Money maker. Overtime.
Overtime was up, fuel was down.
This incorporates also the, when we had the guys out during the disaster. At water doing.
Absolutely. Which was.
And how do you count all of those hours when we try to get that on FEMA?
We've, the guys have done a phenomenal job of tracking them and getting, I mean, they're not perfect, but we.
Yeah.
They're pretty good. They did a great job.
Briefing that day, they said just, basically just write it down, right?
Yes.
They were pretty, yeah.
And what's easy for us is that we're, we can account it through uh, time entry, which is our encode software.
You gotta back up.
We gotta back up so we can go to those, that week or those two, three weeks and see where they were working quite a bit more time and.
Yes.
Time was storm time.
Yes.
Yes.
It was for shutdown and.
For sure, it's a storm, for sure.
Well, we're doing storm. We weren't doing normal.
Stop mowing.
Pick up trash.
Get into there.
Yeah, it's worried.
Group insurance pop this, or you're looking for that to pop us.
Thirty-five fifteen, let me see what that was. Yes. Sure, they're in there.
I was thinking, this one verified with you for.
Operational, we've got that budgeted. There, ten grand, what, or roughly? What, what entails in that?
I'm sorry, I'm just, what, what are we talking?
Fourteen.
Two, one thirteen.
Operational, that's the three percent.
That's the three percent, yes.
Okay, gotcha.
Operational, that's all of the employees.
All the employees.
The forty-five, thirty-one. Um, projected to be up double there, is that right?
Yes, that is uh, the seal coat.
Okay.
If councilor remembers.
For two years.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Last year, we allocated it.
Every year.
Arpa funds.
Yes.
May go to the next budget year if they keep pushing it off, huh?
Well, I'm hoping not. I'm thinking, oh, they're coming in September, so we'll see. But it's getting, it's getting pretty cool. That's the reason we didn't get into the program because it gets cold and that's the hot oil and the Vulcan rock and the pre-coated rock won't stick.
We all know when we needed it, why we needed it for S V C. I know we tried.
Yeah, we're still trying to work through that and next stop's kind of adjusting theirs on college. Avenue because just things happen downstream contractor. It, it's, it's kind of crazy, but we're trying to stay on top of it.
We knew it was gonna be that way though.
At least they finally started.
Right, but if you started and you can't quit until it's done.
Yeah, but they started in front of your house.
They did. I'm glad I have a four by four now.
You'll be the first one.
Maintenance and repairs, other structures and machinery, both of those, uh, for tad. We've got some projects, you're up. Fifty percent increase on machinery.
The other structures, what I was talking about earlier, with the, when the water department has a water leak. Street department comes in there and out of that department.
Where it comes out of there.
Out of.
The machinery.
And alleys.
Right. Machinery and then.
Machinery was a repair on a loader.
But your, your budget ended from twenty to thirty.
Anything yellow is pricey, especially for repairs to.
So is the Christmas decorations, um, the pickup in the mosquito sprayer in here yet?
About the bear.
I got thirty thousand, or that bear is only ten.
You'll see the bear. No, you're not going to PM there.
Mayor will agree with me.
I'll take a video.
Yeah, please do.
I haven't seen it, but I'm excited.
Go video.
Mayor, I'm sorry, uh, thirty thousand's not reflected for the Christmas decorations in there.
With the pickup and the sprayer in there.
Pickup in the.
We've gotta do some of those Christmas decorations. Those are badly.
I think. Senior equipment only has thirty-five. It should be.
Absolute forty-five.
He didn't get to pick up.
The ones on College Avenue, I remember as a.
Joe, do you have the purchase date roundabout of the Christmas decorations we're talking about replacing?
For college.
Nineteen sixty-six.
I mean.
That, that was a long time ago.
Nineteen sixty.
Talking decades.
Probably the same ones from when I was a kid. I remember I was sitting in a little backseat.
Twenty years old, but.
But once I started, I started in two thousand two, so I was putting up those, I don't know if you remember those big giant Christmas trees that were round and they were, they were really, really heavy. And it was all through College Avenue and they're like, all of them were the same. There was just big giant ones.
Okay, sounds.
And, yeah, and they weren't cool.
Okay, I remember.
They had the old bulbs and the C nines and then they were really, really heavy with the, uh, oh man, it was like iron inside there, the, the way they made them. And uh, I think maybe about four years later, I think that's when we went to those.
Okay.
So it's, they've been, they've been there for a long time.
Two thousand six.
I would say so.
Part of the challenge with Christmas decorations is the companies that sell them only warrant. For fifty mile an hour winds.
Have they been here?
I was like, okay, our brackets, we, we can be done with that in a, in a day. Century. So that's, that's the hard part is most of them say they're only.
That is hard, however, we don't see a ton of heavy winds in that time of the year.
Definitely our winter time.
It's usually March is when we start really having issues.
Previous.
But because I said that, it'll happen in December.
We'll have a winter storm now.
Yeah.
Another reason.
It's her windstorm with snow.
He can't blow anywhere. He'll, he'll be right there, perfect. Look good in front of a crony, big green bear.
On motor vehicles, we spend eight dollars. He's got a eight dollars in there. That's a miscos.
Oh.
So we go to T M L, you and I'll go find the bear and he can't go with us.
Thank you.
We'll look at the Christmas decorations.
Well, and now I want them and, I mean, we can get them in time, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's part of why we're putting them in this so that when we go, some of those folks, if you order them, like.
Yeah. Cause you know, you can't get anything. You can't get anything two, less, two years out. Sure.
Like the animal control box.
Yeah. Ladder truck, anyway.
They're in here, but I don't know how long.
Yeah, I don't know.
And then you've got a vehicle in there, but the street's up a hundred and fourteen.
Yeah, yeah. With, in sixty of that would be the pickup and the mosquito sprayer.
That still doesn't have the Christmas decorations.
Right. It's really eleven.
He didn't put enough to cover the entire Christmas decorations, so, so I'll have to go in there and adjust that.
Thirty's not enough, is what you're saying?
No, he's got five.
Okay.
Machinery and equipment, and I told him to put that in there, but thirty was for, supposed to be for the Christmas decorations, then fifteen for the mosquito sprayers. Forty-five, so another ten grand within that, so we're off around ten grand for that.
Okay, so you're saying it'd be one, okay, okay. One eighty seven.
When it's named, that's the city secretary.
Actonists and skaters.
I was trying to find the, the green bear.
That's the side of my son. I may still have.
I've got the catalog.
They still have the photo, even though Michael broke my heart.
You wouldn't even pay road yet. Would you? Yeah. It's a topiary, a big fake topiary, but it's probably five, four, five foot tall.
For ten grand?
Yeah. He's like, I really want this.
We need the one, it's like a second, like with a defect.
Yeah, yeah.
He sure can, yes. Bathroom break, anyone?
Andrea's not here to shut the sound off.
Okay, we'll take a break.
We're taking a break.
All right. We're taking a break.
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 We got those for him.
Yes. Hey, and the ones that we had in the, that we bought for the civic center, what are we gonna do with those now? I'm sure there's a place, a great place for them, but.
We're gonna keep using them at the city.
About thinking leaving them at the city.
Okay, I get it, yeah.
Was there? Uh, this capital outlay, uh, for seven thousand dollars, that's a code reader, so you can plug into the cars and, and find out what's wrong with them.
I'm sure that, yeah, where are we at?
The very last side of forty-five.
Page nineteen.
Okay.
Oh, code reader for all city vehicles.
Yes.
Any answer to your question, I mean, those fans will probably stay at the civic center, but they could also be moved to like the fire department if they've got something going on in those bays or something.
Community event?
Yeah.
Something like that.
Those are really nice.
I've seen some cities have them outdoors when they have, uh, music downtown or something, they put them to where if there's a band performing to keep.
On them.
Cool air going on them, so.
Cool. So he's, he's, uh, last year or so.
Derek's, Derek's right.
Mm-hmm.
He's under ball.
Hey, Parks, twenty, page twenty? He's got, uh, several expenditures and things that he's going before LCDC on Tuesday.
What? Oh, the sixth.
Yes, sir, Tuesday.
So, let's see what's.
Like you said, there's no LCDC investments in this current budget listed right here, no offsets.
Correct.
I don't have any.
From this, yeah, from this year.
Nothing in the revenue for it.
No.
Ten grand.
And right now, if you go, um, if you, if you wanna scroll down to, uh, Capital Outlay oh one four twelve forty-five thirty-one, that's usually where we put it in there until we, we transfer those funds over. So there's that one twenty-five, three twenty-nine, where I said it was like one twenty-six or so, so.
What line item?
Uh, Capital Outlay four one four five thirty-one.
So what's the ninety-eight?
What he's putting down.
Yeah, so. The two eighty-four is in there? I mean, I'm betting the Parkmaster plan's not, but I wondered if the mowers and pickups were.
I think the. Swing set falls out, are in there, media park improvements are in there. Uh, and sand separators for water well, all three of those add up to about ninety.
Eight thousand.
Ninety-eight.
That's the ninety-eight, there you go, that's the ninety-eight. And the sand separate. Remitary tubes?
Deals.
Yeah, they're working on it today, so.
We're, we're having major issues with them.
I'm hoping whatever they get done today will, will, will fix it.
What is casual again?
Seasonal part-time.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
You know what, on Sunday, I didn't remember, I didn't remember what it was, but on Sunday, he told us what it was and he said, nobody was gonna remember this.
I know, I have to.
I didn't remember.
I did.
I feel like you're probably more used to this. I was just ignoring it, I saw it went up and I was like, I'm not gonna, we're good. No, it didn't, it went, it was under, that's what it was.
Right, but the motor vehicle's not in here, right? Or am I, am I missing?
Motor vehicles is on forty-three fifty-one, oh, no.
The ninety's in, uh, the very bottom, four, forty-five fifty-one, the ninety thousand.
Oh, yeah. Oh, clearly, right there, okay.
Oh, that's repairs and maintenance that I was.
And the mowers might be in like other equipment.
That's in machinery equipment, five forty-one.
Thirty-one hundred.
Forty-five forty-one there.
Got it. Got it. Okay, so it's all in there.
That's inclusive, that, that, uh, thirty-one thousand includes the ice machine, uh, utility trailer for, for carrying the mower and a mower.
Okay, so it is all of it, literally.
It's all in there, the only thing that's not in there is that master plan, right?
Correct, and I think that's what is gonna be presented to LCDC.
He. He's taken, what he's taken to LCDC. Parks Master Plan, sixty-five thousand. New fifty by fifty basketball court. Um, Seventeenth Street Park.
C W, Seventeenth Street.
Yes, it is.
Fifty trees.
Triangle part, W part.
Triangle.
The basketball goal is at Triangle Park?
Basketball, the basketball, it's part in concrete, right?
Yes, larger fifty by fifty.
Every time when I, every day when I leave, 'cause I go out the back way out the alley, I see kids playing on that thing.
It's a fantastic park.
Always has kids playing.
Yep.
Fifty trees, where are they going? Everywhere?
Park.
City park. It's a lot of trees. A lot of, it's a big park, too.
If you don't stand on top of replacing those trees, though, it'll, we won't have one.
Get ahead of you.
And another phase of the city park plan, or no, I, he doesn't have any dollars, so I'm sure he's still working on that. And, um. Pickle ball court conversion. At the old tennis courts near the fire station. About twenty-five thousand.
Is that the one that's a skate park now?
It's right next to it.
Beside it.
I had forgotten about it until the chamber windshield tour and it's setting right, right next to it, I had forgotten that it was honestly there.
You said twenty-five thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
The tennis court, right.
Still play tennis on it.
You play there every Sunday, Joe, tennis?
I play tennis, can't take away my tennis.
You can go to college and play the tennis, or the high school, you can go to the high school.
They have theirs locked.
Yeah, you can't do that most years. SPC doesn't, no, SPC is open.
No.
He's so full of it.
I know how to play.
You wanna come play me?
Those are rules.
All schools were open.
Play, I play racquetball.
I'll play there, too.
I got about that possibility.
Four semesters.
Oh, I didn't think that.
And then I played at.
I just did it for fun, though.
I played my professors.
We could do some.
Athlete.
Easy A in college, play racquetball.
Yeah, well, I needed a sports car.
I bowled. That shows my age.
Do I still even still have the bowling alley out out there?
He said, when I went to.
At South Plains College.
No.
Had a four, they had a four lane house out there for a while.
No, I, I did it at Lobo Lanes.
Fine.
Anyways, we're digressing.
Which is the off, you know.
Rest ridge is, by the way, Lobo Lanes.
Yes.
How many of those Lobo Lanes? I'll take you.
ames that, too.
But it's a funeral home?
Yes. What a tangent. I know, we're digressing.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm just letting y'all.
Control.
Never had.
He has no idea about Lobo Lanes.
Be renting.
IT budget, which page twenty-two is contract, blue layer to manage. To manage our staff. We can't afford to have a person to do it. We did have someone on payroll, they would be at public safety ninety percent of the time. Now. Just trying to keep up with, between fire and police and.
Radios and.
Radios and cameras and.
Oh, does this allow adding the cameras here?
That big company, I love it, that.
Is this, is this allowing any beef up on cameras or anything around here?
We haven't, we're still getting proposals for security, which we know we need to do, we haven't, but we hadn't got the numbers, so we hadn't even tried to put anything in.
In that same vein, what about the generators?
We haven't gotten, I, Nicole was working on that the last I heard, so. We're chasing down things, it's.
As a storm exposed a lot of.
Yes.
Vulnerabilities that we had.
And the reason it's coming in at a hundred and twenty-four is the, we upgraded our antivirus. Per email. That's what the cost is. And then, uh, all the, uh, when it comes to Tyler Tech, uh, in, uh, Blue Layer, uh, they're always going up five percent, so we had to include a five percent increase for next year, that's why you see, uh, going up again, so.
I was doing business and, um, I hate, I hate that.
I finished it a long time ago whenever I came and did something with. Being my man, I asked and I was.
Going back to the tower. Building a new tower might help us with broadband, might help us be able to communicate more among our facilities, 'cause that's. In our IT, we're, we're, we're constantly having challenges with our software, some of its broadband's just, it's not strong enough to carry it, some of it's the actual company, but it's kinda hard to, to market them when we know internally we've got some challenges there, so. It's something that we're gonna have to look at because our software groups are upgrading their stuff and we're not able to, to kinda manage, I don't know how many times. Today, you know, Joe's working on the budget and he's just sitting there staring at a wall waiting for it to quit spinning around and, you know, if you took all the staff time that we, we lose, uh, it, it can, it can mount up measurably.
Sima.
Literally get up from our desk and come back and it's still, and Nancy does that with billing and payroll every two weeks.
Yeah, and everybody, everybody's on their computer, especially during time entry, everything slows way down, so.
And, and the worst thing is when they put it all in and it goes and they've lost all the data, it won't capture it or save it, they, sometimes they gotta start all over what they've been doing. So we've got to look at that and figure out, I know the city's been talking about it for a while, but we've gotta figure this out. Cause it's just, it's, it's frustrating.
I think James had mentioned that we're, we're gonna try to see if we can't schedule something with, uh, uh, Tyler Tech in, in Houston at TML.
Okay.
Maybe you'd have a scheduled meeting.
Sure.
Well, if anybody's interested in.
Yeah.
Maybe they'll buy the green bear.
So, we, we really can't nail down what the problem is, so, you know.
Everybody does this, they blame it on broadband, broadband blames it on our.
And I don't know enough about it to go, no, it's really you, no, that's the bad thing.
We think, you know, one of the, the common things we heard if there was a tower close enough to where we could. Basically put boosters, move stuff, that would solve a lot of the issues and.
What is, what does SPC do? What is, don't they have a tower, they do something, it was smart what they did, I just don't remember.
They've done some stuff, but, and, and we haven't had a chance to meet with them, but we, we've talked to some of the folks, they said that they're not a hundred percent happy.
Okay.
So, you know, th- this is another one of those things that we need to get people in a room and say.
Yeah, I say, didn't they?
They've got a dedicated trunk to them.
South Plains Cooperative, uh, fifteen eighty-five, they ran their fiber from fifteen eighty-five all the way to South Plains Call.
They had an extra fiber there that we could have had, but we have to bring it from.
Yeah, we talked about that, and they're, they're still in conversations, James, we need to bring that.
Still possible.
Back up.
There, there, there's still some, but again, you know, if, when the broadband came and, and, you know, Joe kinda makes it real, real simple, you know, our biggest challenge is we've got. Like a four inch pipe that's coming down to a one inch.
Yeah.
And it just can't move the data through, um, I've had. Several of the big internet companies, hey, we wanna come, we wanna do this, but we want you to sign this long-term contract, and we all know what'll happen then as soon as we sign it.
Yeah, service goes down.
So, it doesn't matter how many gigs you have, it can be fifty gigs or a hundred gigs, but the way I put it, too, is if you have a five lane highway, express highway, everybody's on it, it's, it's, you know, it's during lunch hour.
Throttles it down.
It throttles down, you can't, you're only gonna go as fast as the traffic is going, so if you got everybody on that same one, it's not, doesn't make a difference how big it is. If it's really before, another example is a golf ball in a garden hose, or a baseball or a volleyball in a garden hose, trying to suck that in there, I mean, it, it's just, it's not gonna work. So, find different options to make that work.
And it was another one of those items that really was highlighted during the storm, we were trying to do some stuff and not everything was communicating well, and it was, it was frustrating. So. And if we want our community to thrive and grow and business come here, then we've got to solve this issue because a lot of people work from home.
For sure, small businesses need it.
So we're counting on your wisdom to navigate us through this, Mary.
Oh, on broadband? Absolutely. Okay, yeah, I'll start doing a lot of research. I'm gonna need to brush up, let me tell you.
We're all learning more about it, we've looked, in the bad days, whatever you learn is probably outdated, as soon as you, cause it's changing so fast.
I definitely agree, it's an issue, it's a community-wide issue, and we do need to do something about it, cause if we don't do something about it, who's going to? I mean, it's gotta be the entities that do something about it, you know, citizens don't have the power to get that kinda thing here, and it is a business constraint, it is, businesses have said, that is impeding my business. Uh, so it is, it is very, very important and worth our time and effort and, and resources, I just, I don't know how you, I don't know how, what fixes it, cause that's not my realm, you know? More fiber, right, Joe, like on another line, we need more fiber, right?
Any legislation pushing down some broadband grants and things?
There's some grants and stuff, but, and we're part of that broadband initiative out of the South Plains Social Government, but I don't really know. Where it's going or what's happening, it's like we had a big.
In the meeting, but it was, there wasn't like a plan, it's like, yeah, we all know that's the problems.
Yeah, we got the reports that there's a problem.
Yeah.
Hey, what are we gonna do to fix it? There's a problem. And it was like.
Well, the broadband study showed that we had the capability, but it doesn't show the problems that we're having with the capability that's there, does that make sense? So, yeah, we're all blue everywhere in Levelland, but, uh, it, it's available, let's put it that way, it's available, but the, I guess, what we need. As far as connectivity and, and the, the speed of it, it's not there.
And how do we get it? How do we get more? How do we get them, you need multiple options to bring us more fiber.
We're gonna have to take the bull by the horn and do it, and it's just what we're gonna have to do, is figure out how do we get. Folks in here, and, and economic development is gonna have to be a player in that because they've got some dollars that can help, because that's where most of it is, is dollars involved.
Some seed money, I mean, they want some kinda financial commitment to bring that.
Somewhere that somebody's gonna be looking at partners and they're gonna be saying, okay, what are you willing to, to step up with, so, but.
From communication, communications with our largest provider. They are updating all their infrastructure, I guess it's like us in the water and wastewater department and all that stuff as a city, we, all the infrastructure's getting old. So we need to upgrade all that, just like that, they're doing all that, they're spending the money, uh, on, and getting that updated, and then later they're gonna come in and start on. Lane, possibly more lines, cause if you only have two lines coming from Loba. And, I mean, everybody uses them.
And then they oversell, and then they oversell it.
Exactly, and then residential on commercial doesn't matter, you got those two lines and then bam, it's all, it's all.
One named Yesdier.
Yeah.
Fowler, I guess now, Vexis, Vexis, it's called.
But Vexis has really been reaching out and wanting to do more, they were actually very, very responsive during the storm, uh. Getting their stuff cleaned up and not just leave it laying on the ground.
Good.
So, uh, it may be an opportunity to sit down with them and, and see what ideas or what we can be doing.
I heard at one time there was someone who moved to the country club that wanted, called them for new services and they said, I'm sorry, we don't have any to sell, we're full. You would, I would think then you would be reinvesting, but I'm, I'm not Vexis and.
Yeah, and the fiber's not on every street, like on Rice, one, one of the main players has a fiber, but the other one doesn't, like, both, both of them have fiber.
Yeah.
That's how it is in my neighborhood, if you're on this side of the alley, you can get it, and on this side you can't.
Right.
Opportunity is what I see there. But maybe it's just a big meeting that.
You gotta.
The opportunity and then.
Our major on it.
Yeah.
Major players are coming in, too, when I say major player, I mean, like AT&amp;T.
Users.
Yes.
Verizon, all these big cellphone companies are now expanding into all that.
A- and when.
Selling their own internet, right? Okay.
Years ago, Rose, broadband was country only, it went in city limits, so now you can get it inside city limits.
We just got to figure out where we can create some partnerships.
Yeah, the SPAC meeting was good, but it just wasn't. We're gonna do, yeah, it was informational, not problem solving.
Maybe we need representation on the board. Maybe we need representation on the board.
Page twenty-three.
That's right. Twenty-three, Michael, building services. You need more internet.
Same subject real quick here. We know not much in this one.
No, buildings, just where, pretty much is where City Hall operates.
That's where City Hall comes out of.
Pretty straight across the board.
You said on professional services, we're gonna look at it up there first later. Isn't that on twenty-four?
Yes, sir. He said if we do, which they are reviewing our charter now. That we're probably going to be looking at an additional twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollars.
You left.
Dismissed while you were gone.
You also remember Craig?
But their other services did not go up. It's the same that we have budget later.
Sir, and he's been very, very responsive since taking over.
That's awesome.
So. Not that that wasn't, but we really haven't missed a beat there at all. But that's been very, very nice.
Good to hear.
H R. Pretty much. Same, the big thirteen thousand again, that came out of city secretary's budget advertising. Salary higher because we brought someone in a higher salary than what we had originally budgeted. Part of that is you, um, just very similar to, um, finance. You want good people, you're gonna have to pay for them.
Absolutely.
I think we made two great hires last year.
I would be needing an HR.
She's looking, she's wanting to do a new personnel. Software management system. Uh, N code has one. Tyler Technologies. We just gotta see. Where ours isn't up to standards and what needs to be adjusted to give them a chance to fix it. And if they can't, then. We may need to make that adjustment to go with something different. Only sounds simple to change software, but it never is. You find all kinds of adability issues and other things, so. But I also want to make sure her job is easy because there's a lot of compliance issues with H R now hazed it. Especially with municipal employees, especially in P D. The public safety has their own kind of world as far as hours. And time, it's, it's. Public safety is not on a two thousand eighty hour block. Fired police have more hours and it, it gets wonky if you don't stay on top of it.
And we moved the advertising over to H R for.
Right.
Left thirteen thousand of that twenty-six thousand increase.
I think her biggest thing was trying to get. That's her biggest concern. She says that H R S, H R I S system helps with that quite a bit.
And, and again, I think Tyler Techno N code can get it. It's just. One of the things that Joe and I talked about when I first came here is that they have modules just for. Public safety. They're expensive little modules, but that makes life a lot easier. We've just got to look at that, but we've also go back to our previous conversation. We've got to fix the broadband piece, cause. If, if our internet's just not working well and it's a struggle, then it's going to be a struggle no matter what software we have.
It may be an option, like right now we're in encode, or they call ourselves E R P nine. And there's a, the potential to go to E R P ten or encode ten, which encode ten, all it is is same thing, same software, same everything, except it's on the cloud. So I don't know if that makes things faster, if you can pull stuff out of the cloud or if you have directly into a. Uh, servers.
I'm sure it's faster for a nominal fee.
Sure.
I mean, Tyler Technologies, they're great. They're, they're on my list. It's a monopoly. It's a, it's a lot of things.
You know what?
Man, they've got the corner on the market. Can't live without it.
Main Street.
No, sir.
I just turned on page. They're like city management matter.
We missed.
Okay.
Page twenty-six.
Get the E D C if you want. I know, same. Giving him a hard time because he was trying to skip it.
Okay, what, what do y'all want to talk about?
Pretty good. That's why he skipped his auto allowance.
Still won't look.
Looks like the auto allowance increased.
They adjusted his salary and I think his auto allowance this past year.
Yes.
Well, yes, it's.
Six to nine?
Yes.
Up twenty-four hundred?
Now, they did that, that, that board can do that without us. Don't we set budgets?
They approved their budget. They establish your budget and y'all approve it when you approve. The operating budget of the city of Levelland.
Seven hundred and fifty dollars a month.
So when we do our three percent. Included in that, correct?
His adjustment will come through the economic development board.
Did that proposed budget, what, what increase they have suggested?
The three percent.
Is included in here?
It's a, yeah, I included it in here because he, they pay personal services. So they reimburse everything. That the city pays for.
So that's why supervision and clear.
They got, they got that right. Plus he's going to get another three project right. The city.
Just did it through our auto allowance.
Yeah. His adjustment occurred.
It was in April.
Sometimes.
Yes, April eighteenth.
That was after his, uh. Evaluation, yeah. Annual review. I believe that's part of the con, it's in contract that they can have it. Annual review and then go up and wait to.
So they changed that budget in the middle of the. When did we approve that? I'm just, I'm asking for a friend. It's gonna be in October, August, September. They changed in April. When do we?
We didn't approve it apparently.
The eels. It never came before us.
Can we get a copy of their bylaws? I'd like to see those. Please.
Do that right now?
No, 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 no. Just, I'm gonna get a water. I'm not leaving.
He's mad.
Done. I'm just.
It's a, it's an interesting animal.
Yeah, I mean, just curious because all the other boards.
It's not how anything else works.
Correct.
Oh, he's controlling it tonight. I'm like, she's not even.
Joe's, Joe's the mastermind. Joe is the I T guru.
Thought it was gonna be quick for me to find it. I found the L C D C pretty quick. I got my.
In.
Bazillion emails.
Yeah, you're.
And Justin's travel and training is not listed in E D C.
It's in the special fund, fund twenty-two.
Okay, so it'll be down the road, the same?
Yes.
Okay.
Only personal services is listed on, cause that's kind of like the city. Is it fourteen eighteen? Four seventeen is the city.
You're thinking of a mayor and council? I don't have your.
Okay, it's just, name Michael.
Uh, mayor and council. There you go. Two downs. Bingo.
Bingo.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
They go to our council emails or they go to our personal?
It goes to your.
What's that, council? I think council.
Your official email accounts are.
Margot wrote on to me because I don't check that one near as often as I check my personal. He said, I don't have your personal and I was, sorry.
Thank you, Joe. You're efficient.
Boy, he's the best.
Right.
I sent you L C Ds. Just. Y'all weren't familiar.
So I can retire, Joe. I can retire.
I can retire.
Mayor told me I could already say.
We can go to the next page. We don't have any control over that one, so.
Yeah, well, why are we looking at it? See, you're the one who wanted it. That's why he skipped it.
Point, sir.
So I guess we can go to the next page if we don't have any say over that page.
We're on Main Street, sir.
That's where I'm at.
We're eighteen.
It's great.
Our new director will be beginning August thirteenth. We had to make some adjustments, but she'll be here.
Oh, okay. From the first one? It was August eighth.
It was the sixth and then the seventh and then I think it jumped to the third. I don't know. Uh, and just so, y'all, I told. Mary and I told Kelly that if Chamber needs her, uh, during this transition, that. Feel free, do not clock out of here or say whatever, just go down and do whatever needs to be done to help them succeed.
Appreciate that. Looks like this, this Main Street budget has only gone up on, uh, provision. Yeah.
Already got it, too.
They did lose all of their downtown lights, uh, Christmas lights during the storms. That, that's not in here. We may want to be looking at that. I don't think insurance is going to cover that at all.
Did she have more stuff damaged in the storm? Cause wasn't her stuff in the water?
She's, um.
I don't know what it consists of.
No.
But mainly Christmas lights is what.
Downtown on the, on the buildings. We're, you know, hanging your jacket and the carpet. Thank you so much.
It didn't make it to this list.
We all told you thank you too.
Wow.
Did you see it?
Underappreciated, that's it.
Christmas lights, buildings.
Yes.
One of the items we're, we haven't placed it in here yet, um, we're still looking. Is trying to put in forty-five thousand for a storage building. Uh, big enough to where everything can be in one spot. But also locating it in a place that is safe. Numerous times, Tanya is out there at eleven o'clock at night. Needs to be.
If we could find a spot near the fire section, that wouldn't be.
Cause there's people there.
No, I agree that the fire station and maybe even to where that phone call from Kelly can come in that, hey, I'm gonna go. Put these up right now and some two people or somebody walks out there and, you know, just make sure, yeah. Proximity, I get it.
And I know too, if she called, uh, L P D, says we're doing this, they would have an officer come by wherever that. I don't think Tanya did that and, and she probably should have. But, you know, we do live in a good community, but I've heard you be, oh, it's safe. I, you know, I know Levelland, well.
These officers.
Fortunately, we got some entertaining folks that visit our community.
I guess we can put more revenue in police security.
Well, a lot of times.
No.
But when we have those events, don't we have extra security out there? I mean, anyway, so.
They leave early. They don't ever hang around till the end.
But maybe it's a. See for Kelly to, to start with is that she makes sure she has somebody, some help, you know, buddies as some, yes.
Those Christmas lights were about twelve, twelve thousand, weren't they?
She's saying they're about twelve or fifteen and I remember.
Was that purchase price then or replacement cost?
Those in with the Christmas lights for the damn.
Might get a good discount.
Might be getting a little, little as.
Oh, good.
No, go what?
No, I was like, if I'm not mistaken, I think that included the tear down and put, put up.
Installation.
And then the actual bulk of buying the, the lights. And I think she was trying to go to LEDs. And leave them year round. So, but like I said, these.
Get it. I get it.
Some of those, some of those Christmas companies, they may have that service.
Oh, those are things we need to ask them is, you know, do they have that? Because it would be fun to have lights that we could.
Basketball games. I saw somebody do that.
The Marigolds were instrumental in getting those lights, if I remember right, to the end with, you know, fundraisers for that. So maybe there's projects for that, that, you know, the Christmas lights have been there. For better for, for years until they went up there on a more permanent status. So I know it's near and dear to their hearts. Maybe partnership there somehow. Maybe we, I don't know. Maybe we sell T-shirts. We'll figure it out.
I know our street stuff we're trying to do before this Christmas is her lights, what we're trying to do before Christmas too? This year?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. No, and it makes our town look so pretty.
Yes, it's, it looks good. I love the idea of them being able to get change color for holidays. I mean, if you're going to invest in them, you need to go to the LEDs right now anyway and all that. But those are expensive too.
Realtors to underwrite the cost. They're still above.
Any other questions on Main Street?
Yes, sir. Not for me.
Debt service. That's general fund. Cemetery revenues.
Review, open and under that one. That's what that is.
Ask you, you should. Back in general, fund.
Debt services.
If you'll see twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, there is seven hundred and six thousand eight dollars that are in parentheses. Not good. Correct.
Correct.
Joe's been straightening up today, so I'm just making sure. So that means we've got to do some tightening, but there's also some things that we don't have in there.
Whereas, yeah, as far as the, we want to talk about the ARPA funding and.
We don't have the.
Contributions.
ARPA, L C D C, maybe some E D C contributions, but to be honest, there's not seven hundred and six thousand dollars worth of. Contributions we don't have, right? And we had that one number that was in there twice, but would that make a difference? You know, that sixty-six grand?
Not as much, because that's in the projected.
Right. Okay. So.
It would make a difference for this year's budget, but not next year's budget.
Okay. Regardless, we've got to, we gotta find some things, right? That's what we're saying.
Look, we've got to go back through, ensure our revenues, make sure we're very comfortable with those numbers. And then again, uh, go through some of the capital stuff. And see, um, especially in parks, if there's things that L C D C can fund. I know. Uh, you know, they like to have money to take care of some big projects or matching grant funds, but. They can also help with a lot of little things too that, um, are out there. Make a difference. Not going to make up a lot, but it, it does have an opportunity to help us get through some things.
And then come into a proposed budget near you. You can have the capital financing fund, which then we'll see. Uh, how much is in there, which is, uh, the, it's the internal financing fund where we borrow from ourselves and pay us back with interest. Two percent interest usually, so. And right now we're utilizing five hundred and. And right now we're utilizing five hundred and thirty-six thousand that was budgeted last year, this year, uh, to do the landfill pit. And we also, uh, budgeted a hundred and eight thousand, uh, one for, it's for shit for parks. Uh, I think it was, uh, mowers and a, and a truck was for that hundred and eight thousand.
Questions on cemetery? Going to next. Three cents of our, up to three cents of our property.
Three cents of, of our property taxes go to cemetery fund. Do you look back on our structure for this year? You have your general fund. We're seven, five, seven, five. The general fund, cemetery fund, point zero three, and then the interest and redemption fund, or what we like to call it to make it simplified, debt fund. Uh, point zero three, six, two, seven, one.
That was last year's.
This is, this current year, yes.
So even if you, you know, dropped it down to two cents, which it was, that's only gonna be sixty-three thousand, that would go back. I mean, I don't wanna say that sixty-three is not a lot, but.
It's not seven hundred thousand.
Sixty-three, uh, it's not change. You're gonna see the biggest change in the cemetery fund by taking sixty-three thousand dollars away from the cemetery fund, and what you would do to inject it in the general fund. That makes any sense?
Yes, yes. Damage often.
Exactly.
Cemetery is already.
And again, current tax collections are looking between ninety-six and ninety-eight. If we wanna go back to that tax structure. We were living from two nineteen, seven ninety-four to two twenty-eight, nine fifty-two, so we're sitting in the middle. At two twenty-one.
Revenues there are what they are. Not a lot.
And you, you know, oh, three, thirty-five, twelve, the transfer is out, again, that's talked about earlier about the salaries. You see the increase because that's the three percent. And if you'll notice on most of those, most of these, uh, revenues, as you've been seeing, our royalties have been pretty stagnant or a little lower than what we were anticipating, so that's kinda surprising to me.
Where are those wells located?
That's the one, uh, I guess you would call it west of the cemetery. Big pump jack right there. Where the new parts at?
Yes, I know. Don't die silent, choking silent deaths.
Drowning.
Yes.
Other questions on revenue? Expenses? Page thirty-two. All the way at the bottom, you'll see almost fifty-four thousand in parentheses.
So that's machinery and equipment and the motor vehicle. Right, that's forty-five, forty-one, forty-five, fifty-one.
Just one vehicle there.
Cemetery, wasn't it?
Yes.
The machinery, what was machinery?
It's a irrigation upgrade for improvements, so that ten thousand dollars. And you have two mowers for machinery and equipment, then you have one motor vehicle for, for fifty grand. I guess you would say the increase is that motor vehicle, it will, it would come out.
Do we have any many bet ship for potential water well work? Sand problems?
Not any extra money or?
No, it's not, it's not like, contingency would be a good way. Yeah. They were there today.
Cause it's there, I mean, ever since I've had it dug, there's been a sand problem.
I mean, it falls under that twenty, twenty thousand we have there for other structures.
So maybe that's our contingency right there, along with the whole year for everything else.
Everything else.
Yes.
How bad do they need the vehicle?
I don't think cemetery has gotten a pickup in the past, what, five, six years or so? Um, from my understanding, they're, they have one that is giving them fits. And they were looking to trade that one in.
I don't think it's big enough to haul everybody together.
It's not.
That's the other thing, is they crew, if they've got, they kind of, kind of do some weird things to get everybody around where they've gotta go.
We're just thinking about Joe's pickup, you know, with that low mileage on it.
New seat in it.
Thousand dollar seat in it.
Might be an option.
It's a good, a good thought. Or the bikes, electric bikes now.
And their offices there, their main work area there, they have to go around and do other things, but most of their driving's there.
Well, they take care of two, two. Sure, by the highway.
I mean, it's not that I wanna cut them, it's just that's fifty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and that's the next line out.
Yeah, and, and we have a truck with just sixty-two thousand miles. It's maybe, I mean, the farther you go into this thing, more things in parentheses, you have to find things.
Yeah. And I need a mower. I need a mower for sure.
Right, if the truck works, you need the mowers, so. Maybe.
Mayor would recommend we stop here.
Okay.
Enterprise fund is next.
A whole nother beast.
Eight o'clock.
Downstreet. All right, with that, I move that we adjourn.